Foster?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
White?
Here.
Chairman Clifton?
Here. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. That's what I wanted to do.
It seems like it's working. We've still got a couple of minutes.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
We're gonna let him out.
I'd like to call the meeting. This is the Northern Park Planning Commission to order, please. Today, we are doing something we've never been able to do before, but our staff at the Planning Department and the tech staff here at City Hall has been working to put this together so that we could have our regularly scheduled meeting and get the city's business and the applicants to be able to come in and take care of their business. So, on behalf of Don Chambers, the Vice President of the Subdivision Site Review Committee, he and I are here today along with Sean Spencer, who is our Planning Director, and we will be conducting this meeting. We have a procedure set forth, so if folks will just work with us, we will try to get through and get things taken care of. So, we'll start with a roll call. Mr. Spencer, will you please call the roll?
Banks?
Here.
Velasco?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Dietz?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
White?
Here.
Chairman Clifton?
Here. Thank you. We do have one member absent. Do I hear a motion to excuse our absent?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Wallace that we excuse the members that are not present. Would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Here.
Velasco?
Oh, yes.
Here.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Here.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, he has been excused. We'll move right on into our next order of business, Mr. Chambers.
Minutes?
Yes.
Were you going to call?
Our next order of business is the minutes of our previous meetings have been supplied to you. Are there any corrections or additions to the previous minutes?
Boo for approval?
Please, I'd be apprived.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. They be approved as submitted. Please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yeah.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes, they have been approved as submitted, and we'll move right into our regular Planning Commission. Item number one is rezoned case number 2020-5, Mr. Spencer.
I explained for some folks might be watching outside, what we're gonna do on our process here, we're gonna hear, we've got six items on agenda. We're gonna hear one item, and at the end of that item, if you want to leave, you can leave, and the next group will come in, and we'll try not to have people passing in the hallway or each other. So, there may be some lag time in between items for everybody at home and for the commissioners, and that's to give one group of people to leave and another group to get in. So, if you just bear with us to allow that, so we make sure we're not breaking any rules here. So, just want to make that clear for everybody, so.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Item number one is 2020-5 to rezone property from I-2 to O-1 and to amend the land use plan from Malta Family to public to allow for a school at 9701 White Oak Crossing. Is the applicant or representative here? Please come and give us your name, please.
I'm Josh Minton with Minton Engineering. We also have Rob McGill with Academics Plus and Clayton Vaden with Lewis Architects here.
Okay. We have been submitted a copy of your application. Is there anything? Have you been given a copy of the, from the staff for their recommendation?
Yes, we have a copy of that.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to that at this time?
Not at this time.
Mr. Spencer, is there someone?
Want to be able to give us a little overview of what exactly is going on? Just a little five-minute quick process of what, exactly what you're all doing there and everything? Yes.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, just, just, just a...
Okay, this is 38 acres. It's located on White Oak Crossing. You know, the new road that was developed off of the highway. It's located adjacent to the mall mail ballparks on the, on the north side of White Oak Crossing. It's currently zoned I-2. It's undeveloped property. What we have planned there is a new high school for Academics Plus Charter School, also with a soccer field and a track. We have some future development that's planned also that's shown on the site plan, which I believe the site plan will be coming up later in this meeting. I believe that we have had some public feedback, some questions. I believe we've answered everyone's questions about what we're doing here and what we plan on doing and trying to work out the project with all the neighbors.
If we could cover some of those questions on air for everybody that's watching. So, that's what I was sort of asking, if we can
Oh, sure.
get a little review.
I think, uh...
Here's a...
I think Rob and Clayton mainly responded to those questions. I may let, may let them...
Well, I mean, I can read the questions if someone wants to answer them or something, but it was just like...
I don't mind answering them.
Hello?
Yes.
Do you have a show name for the...
Rob McGill, CEO of Academics Plus Charter Schools Incorporated.
Do you have a copy of a list of some questions that some of the residents had, had asked for?
Well, I did answer those questions, but I didn't actually bring a copy with me.
You want, I'll just read some to you if you can answer.
Okay.
So, will the entire site be used for the school?
Yes.
What's the school size?
It'll start out about 450 students, could grow to a little over 600 by the time, in several years.
How many staff do you expect?
Probably 40 to 50, depending on the sizes, the numbers of teachers, I mean, the number of students.
With, with the high school, what sports facilities are you planning on building?
Inside, connected with the building will be a gym, also an auditorium. Then outside would have a soccer field and a track around the soccer field.
And what, what about on the, on the outdoor fields, the lighting, what's the plan for the lighting?
We do plan to have lighting for the soccer field, yes.
The... What's the green space provision at the north of the property?
30 foot setback where we will not disturb, and the only disturbance we're gonna do is where we're actually building. So, the, the parking lot, the ball field and track and the, the building location will clear that area, but everything else we're gonna leave alone at this time, just to leave the trees as much as possible. But, uh, there is a 30 foot setback for a green space, and we'll definitely leave the trees there for now on, now on also.
With this phase that you're building right now, how far, how much trees in the back will, will be touched at this point in time?
For, well, about half of the property, we won't, you'd be able to just go about halfway up to the, with the parking lot, and then the other half of the property, other probably 10 acres is not touched at all. And then on the west side, we'll put a ball field, but it may have 150 foot between the ball field and the northern property line.
Will there be access from the school with the walkway that runs east-west at the budding property?
At this time, we do not plan to connect to the walkway at this time. And correct me if I'm wrong on all this.
Yeah. Well, how are you gonna handle concerns about traffic?
No, we're in the process of having a traffic study completed, and with the results of that traffic study, that's what we will implement.
So, until the traffic stays done, you really don't know what any of the specifics or anything are?
My name's Clayton Vaden with Lewis Architects, and during the, during the staff review, it was requested of us to have a traffic study done, and so we contracted with Peters Engineering, well-known traffic engineer, and, and they have done the study. They have submitted a rough draft to me, and that was just a couple of weeks ago. So, I haven't gone through it completely, and, and Rob hasn't seen it yet. So, as soon as we go through that and talk to them, we'll get the final draft and we'll, we'll forward it to, to you guys.
If it says to do something, you guys are planning on doing it based on their recommendation?
Yes, and that was understanding in the staff review as well, that we'll do what's requested or...
Per the study?
Per the study, and, and you guys will get to see it as well and tell us, you know, those opinions of that.
Are there any plans to connect Milligan Drive and White Oak Lane? And that's probably my question. So, there, at the moment, there's no plans, but it would be up to the private property owners to build the road, and as far as I know, there's no, no one talking about it or planning on it, but it would be something the private property owners would decide if they were wanting to build a road up in the north and south right there. What's the funding source for this project?
Foundation funding from the state, our general operating fund.
So, no millage increase?
No millage increase. Charter schools can't do millages, so we can't do that.
When will the development begin, destruction?
At the earliest of June 2020.
And when will it be done, your plans?
At the earliest August 21.
For that school year?
Yes.
Let me... There are plans to control the foot traffic between the school and the neighborhood to the north?
Well, we're not connecting with a pass, so, you know, they'd have to walk through the woods to get there. Our dismissal will be through the front of the building or the side of the building and not going through that area.
Will football ever, will American football ever be played on the soccer field? Correct that.
I can't say never, but as long as I am the CEO, it will not be recommended. I can tell you that. I mean, we have, people talk about it quite often, but if we, you know, it's gonna be more difficult if we put a soccer field out there striped for soccer, and it's not striped for football. We'd have to have an expense to do that. So, at this point in time, I do not see football being a sport that we're gonna offer. Not to say that couldn't change. The board members change and things could change, but that's not gonna be my recommendation.
What grades are planned at the school?
Eighth grade through 12th grade.
How far will a proposed school building be from the property line of the residential properties to the north? Estimate?
500 feet. Approximately 500 feet.
Okay. Will the entire property be cleared?
No, only the areas that we have to do for construction, the baseball, I mean, the soccer field, track, parking lot and the high school building, and whatever has to be done for utilities and that kind of thing. But other than that, if we can leave it alone, we're gonna leave it alone.
The 30-foot buffer on the north... Let me reword it here. Well, what does, I guess, what does undisturbed mean for the 30-foot property? So, there won't be all the trees that it is right now, it's gonna stay the way it is in that 30-foot?
Yes. Now, if we have a dead tree, we're gonna go try to get it off and that kind of thing, but as far as, we're not planning to clear it or do anything to that. It should be as is unless there's a safety issue that we need to do something with it. It should be as is unless there's a, uh, safety issue that we need to do something with it.
Will the proposed school campus have a fence around it? Or at least to the north and the west sides of the property next to residential property?
At this time, we haven't drawn a fence to the north, and we do have a fence around the, uh, uh, track and soccer field, uh, and on the back of the, the, uh, the high school building, but not around the property at this time.
I think I covered, are you, Mr. Martinez? Yeah, you wanna ask some questions? You'd have to come up here and he'll, he'll step aside. Yeah, I didn't, I don't wanna read your questions if you're here, so... Okay, so, he, he, he may have some questions, and then...
Give us your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Orlando Martinez, I'm, I own a home in the projected area. Uh, Mr. Spencer and Mr. McGill, thank you for answering my questions. When I did email, I exchanged a lot of emails with them, and they did answer all my questions, so I appreciate that. Uh, first question I have is actually on the agenda item itself. Um, it says here that, uh, the rezoning property from I-2, isn't that industrial? I mean, it says here on the agenda that that could possibly be multifamily, is that correct? I wasn't aware that I-2 could be family, I thought it was only for industrial.
The zoning is I-2, there's, there's, uh, we have a land use plan underneath that is a guide. So, the guide says, uh, that in the future, the plans at the point in time it was done would been a good place for apartments.
Okay.
So, it's not, the zoning is I-2 which controls what happens there. There, the plan, and I'm making up the date here, 30 years ago, whenever it was done, the elected officials had thought that that area would be a good place for apartments.
Okay.
And so, that's, it didn't happen, so it...
Would that also require a different rezoning, or it still be following their I-2?
The, it, it, they really don't have anything to do with each other in the way you're thinking about it. So, it was a plan of, in the future, so, where would a good place for apartments be? And, again, I'm making up the date, but 30 years ago, they thought that area might be good for apartments.
Okay, alright, that was my question.
So, it's not, it's not, it's just a guide to what would happen sometime in the future.
Okay, that was just my question on the agenda. Uh, my, I do appreciate you guys answering my questions and actually making them part of the public record, but, uh, a couple of other questions, uh, obviously, we don't have a sketch of, of the proposed site, uh, but there are a couple, there appear to be a couple of, um... Uh, there, you've mentioned one baseball field, the, what you sent me showed two baseball fields, and then it also showed a, a square area that is directly to the north of the, uh... Yeah, this is not what I have, I have a PowerPoint slide. Uh, but there was a, uh, a square area just to the north of the, um, um, of the soccer field. This doesn't show that, what's proposed, where's that square area for?
Okay, the, uh, our first pro, our, uh, we hope that we build a track and a soccer field of, of artificial turf. If we have artificial turf for the, the soccer field, we won't need that, uh, the square above the track. If we don't, if we had to make the soccer field a, uh, a grass turf, make it grass, we have to have a practice field, so that above the track would be a practice field. We hope that we can afford the artificial turf, but that is in case we have that. And the soft, the, uh, we have a baseball field, and the other field is a softball field. Uh, by Title IX, we can't have baseball if we don't have so, another sport for the ladies, so we do the baseball and softball.
Okay, thank you, did that answer your question, Mr. Martinez?
Yes, it did, thank you. Okay, just a couple of other questions. Um, uh, my first one refers to, I mean, you, you mentioned that there is no plan right now to build a fence, uh, to the north to prevent the foot traffic. Obviously, if we're dealing with eighth and 12th graders, they're not gonna be disturbed by walking 30 feet through, through the woods. My biggest concern is that, um, where my property lies is actually, I don't have a fence, I don't intend to put up a fence, and I've actually, uh, forwarded these two gentlemen a, a picture of where my, where my property lies, and there is a walkway adjacent to my property line, and kids that are gonna be going, walking home, I'm sure will cut through my grass and create a footpath that is not desirable to me or my wife, um, number one. Uh, number two, my two biggest concerns about the property, uh, about the proposed school, I'm not opposed to the school, I really am not, I'm all for it. My biggest concern right now is, and I've already discussed with Mr. Spencer, Mr. McGill, is the lighting. Um, that lighting plan will hit my bedroom, uh, the master bathroom, and the master closet. Um, can't be avoided. When my wife and I built the home approximately two years ago, uh, we knew that that land would eventually be, uh, developed, we just weren't expecting that it'd be stadium lighting. Um, that to me encroaches on my standard of living and also the peace of mind that I was hoping to maintain while I was there. I mean, apartments, yeah, I can understand apartments, but stadium lighting, no. Uh, I proposed, I made some proposals to these two gentlemen, uh, to mitigate that. They can discuss that further, I'm not gonna discuss it here, uh, because that's, you know, that's probably gonna be tabled, at least for now. Uh, my other concern obviously is also the traffic. Uh, there is considerable traffic right now without the school and without all the development that's proposed there. There's, there's a lot of land being developed right now there. That two-lane highway, in my opinion, is not sufficient to support the volume of traffic as is as they, as they build the development, and after they, uh, they build the school, it'll be even worse. Um, so, once again, my, my concerns are twofold. The lighting, that's number one, and the traffic are number two. And on record, unless the lighting situation can be mitigated, uh, I'm against the entire project. I do not want lights in my backyard.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you for your time.
The, uh... Site plan review, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I've got, there's a couple more questions that I can answer.
Yeah, I was just gonna, to, uh, address, Mr. Martinez, the site plan review, uh, we'll look at the lighting plan whenever that's discussed later on. Mr. Spencer?
Uh, there's just a couple more questions, and I think, are you, the lady behind, are you here to speak? Yeah, let, let me ask these two questions, then, then you can ask, ask yours. So, someone had emailed, uh... Basically, it says what, what, what can happen in an I-2 zone, and so, uh, here's an example of items. There's a large list of happening in I-2, but here, here's a, a quick list of it. Tractor trailer, tractor trailer sales and repair, tattoo parlor, sexually oriented businesses, poultry slaughter, medical marijuana cultivation facility, dog kennel, bottled gas manufacturing, crop dusting equipment, cell towers, car sale lots, and a, actually, uh, as it is zoned right now, a baseball field or any kind of sports field complex can be built on that property right now. And then what, then the opposite question was, is what can happen in an I-1 or an O-1 zone? An O-1 is more institutional, governmental-type uses. Uh, there's, again, there's a large list, but here's a quick review of some of them. Uh, airports, cemeteries, golf course, governmental buildings, libraries, parks, aquariums, art galleries, athletic clubs, colleges, community centers, hospitals, museums, schools, are, uh, all allowed by right. Yeah, yes, please.
Yes, come up and give us your name, please.
Hello, my name is Shirley Fields. I own property on both sides of the road. And I am, I've been out there since 1984. I am not sure exactly where the city boundaries are, and that was learned through an emergency situation, to say the least. But, um, that's my first question. Where are the city boundaries for North Little Rock and, and Malmell? The city of Malmell and the city of North Little Rock? I've been out there for a very long time. You did not forget Milk or Bread when we moved out there. Uh, the gravel, it was a gravel road, and, um, we, I've got pictures and everything to validate even requesting markers for our street. There are only five residents that live back there. We are at the end of Count Massey where the new highway developed, uh, and the bridge has developed. Um, I thought that the city of Malmell was actually diverting, uh, traffic through Count Massey to the interstate off of the boulevard. Um, I'm glad that a school is coming in that area. It is a very family-oriented area. However, there is also need for commercial development. As you all know, Jump Zone is no longer on that road. It was a huge, um, business that just dissipated. So, there's lots of potential and lots of growth. I just would like to know where the city of Malmell and the city of North Little Rock actually are on that White Oak Crossing road.
Mr. Mittens, do you have that on your drawings? Would you...
Yeah, according to the, we had an ALTA survey done at the property.
Yes. Okay. Well, is, are there any signs in that respect? Yes, going, yes, you are correct. Okay, so, when our emergency happened...
Ma'am, if you, if you wanna call tomorrow at the office, I'll, we'll fax you or email you a map showing the limits?
That's fine, that was just one of my concerns. As well as, the gentleman made a good point, as far as lighting, uh, the development is in there is yet to be drainage, et cetera, so forth. Um, and I've been there many, many years, so, I'm glad to see the growth and development. Um, that's hopefully what our communities and our cities are about, and I'm just glad to be a part of it and wanted to know where those actual boundaries are for those cities.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fields, and those will be addressed, uh, at the site.
Just call us tomorrow, and we'll, we'll get you a map or mail it to you or something.
Okay, thank you, appreciate you guys.
Any other comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. Chambers?
Chairman. Uh, Charlie Foster, uh, I was wondering if the, if the, um, uh, traffic study was gonna include, uh, integration of, uh, bicycle paths or at least how bicycles would, uh, integrate with the vehicle traffic in that area? And that's something that we looked at in all the schools that were developing in North Little Rock and thought it was applicable, really more than such a, uh, pedestrian-type orientation. They got bike paths running through the community out there. I'd like to see, you know, some kind of a study done, uh, of taking advantage and connecting the school traffic, uh, into the bike path system, or, you know, just take consideration to enhance, uh, bicycle traffic and travel to the school.
Yep.
Okay, Mr...
I can address a little of it.
Clayton, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. The, Charlie, one of the issues is, Charlie, that, uh, the city limits go in and out a bunch, and in a lot of places, it's the south half of the road is North Little Rock, and the north half of the road is Malmell, and it's real hard to get a study done, and then if there's funding, if we get the funding, we can't spend it on the Malmell part. If Malmell gets, so, but there, there is, there is a group out there looking at it, yes. Uh, but that, that's sort of the battle with it, is this, where the city limits fall right there. It's, it's real odd where, it's right down the middle of the road in some places.
Well, I think I was kinda also talking about, you know, how that was gonna, uh, bicycle traffic was gonna integrate with, uh, vehicle traffic on the site itself, and if there's a designated area for parking bicycles and, um, access, you know, for bicycle traffic in and out of the school, you know, that was the, kind of the crux of the, uh, study was done on the, the North Little Rock school site.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foster, you had a comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Foster, uh, this is Clayton Vaden, and that was mentioned at the staff review, and, uh, we have provided, if you drive White Oak towards the interstate, there is a bridge that has a bike path lane on that bridge, and it's on the south side of the bridge. So, we, like Mr. Spencer was saying, we assumed that that bike path would be on the south side of White Oak leading to the school. So, we have shown in our drawings to, to stripe across White Oak, uh, with a, with a pedestrian crossing, uh, and pick up from there at, uh, one of our main drives with a bike lane leading from White Oak up into our property to the, kind of the front door, the main entrance where the admin is, we're providing, uh, bicycle racks, and, and so, we're doing what we can on our property. We're showing that, uh, it appears that, uh, with the, uh, bridge having the bike path on the south side of the bridge, we're crossing White Oak with some pedestrian crossing mark, markings, and, and that's as much as we know to do. Now, we haven't asked anything of the traffic engineers to do any sort of bicycle study on that, but, but we're doing everything we can on the property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chambers?
I think that's good enough, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, regarding the issue of lighting, uh, I have some experience with it. Lighting is, can be modeled, and it looks a lot like a contour map in terms of its brightness. Uh, the standard model for, say, parking lot lighting is one-half of a foot candle per square foot. That's what the dimmer parts of a Walmart parking lot is lit to. I would ask that the applicant provide, uh, lighting, a lighting model showing the selected fixture and its light scatter and how it hits the ground and things like that, with a goal of .1-foot candles at the, uh, south side of the buffer. So, that would mean that, uh, if the field is on and lit, that, uh, lighting would be limited, scatter would be limited to being at 1, .1-foot candles or less at the edge of the buffer. And it's easy to, like, getting, have .1-foot candles, trying to get through that buffer to a residence is very difficult. I would also ask that the applicant, uh, increase the buffer to 100 feet. That may not be practical, but 50 would do, and also, uh, supplement the buffer with some evergreen vegetation. All these things help mitigate the lighting effect. Uh, the supplemental planting would probably be one of the cheaper things to do. Uh, also, a little bit of, uh, care in terms of researching the site plan can probably condense the, the plan away from the north property line and allow them to increase the thickness of the buffer to protect the adjacent residents from the light.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers, is that, uh, something that, Mr. Chambers, is that something that y'all would incorporate in your plan?
So, I can respond to the lighting. We will definitely have a, a, um, light study done. We can submit the spread of light and the foot candles, uh, based on the light fixtures that we choose. We can shield those lights. Uh, with the LED lighting now and, and the different, uh, manufacturers, you can, you can really kind of dial that in pretty, pretty significantly, and, uh, so, we will definitely take the recommendation or, or your request at that, and, uh, can submit that at the time, I guess, maybe, uh, building permits trying to be pulled. We'll, we'll have that as a part of our, our, um, documentation.
What about increasing the buffer or evergreen plantings along the south edge of the buffer?
Um, as far as the, uh, extending the buffer, uh, you know, this is premium price...
As far as the extending the buffer, you know, this is premium price property, honestly. It's $2.00 a square foot almost that we're paying and for every foot I go away is thousands of dollars, you know. And, and in looking at our future, you know, we, we really bought the property anticipating we could use the entire piece of property. As far as doing the evergreen buffers, that's something we can definitely consider and, and do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGill. Mr. Spencer, is that, you have another comment?
Well, I, I would just like to say one thing. When we were in the staff review meeting, I believe our, our, the zoning required a 15-foot buffer on the, on the rear yard. Is that right? So, it was recommended at, in staff review and kind of self-imposed that we agreed to the 30-foot undisturbed buffer even at that time. And so, I'm kind of just adding to what Rob was saying that we, we are, we're not trying to push right up against the property to make it bright into the neighbors' backyards and all.
If I may add one final comment regarding the buffers, and this is, and this is to have it on the record, that there are essential utility connections that will have to be made through the buffer. So, as long as the adjacent residents understand that when they see a backhoe at their property line, you're not taking out the buffer, you're just making an essential utility connection, okay? And that hopefully you'll plant something and restore it or try to beep it up.
I think the evergreen board, I think that is easy to do. I, I think we're more than willing to, to jump in and accommodate there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spencer, did you have something else?
No, I, that, I think I covered a lot of the questions that were emailed to us.
Mr. Martinez, you had your hand up?
Yes, sir. I have a follow-on question.
Just a quick follow-on question from Mr. Spencer. Sir, you mentioned some unsavory possibilities of other businesses that can go there.
Yes.
But there could be others, right? Like daycares?
There, there's 30 pages of them, yes.
Yeah, so it's, you, you mentioned the, the unsavory ones, but there could be others that would not be as unsavory, correct?
Correct, on both ends. So, the O1 and the, the I2, yes.
There could be regular businesses as opposed to what you mentioned.
Correct. But the, the I2 zone is, it's not I3, which is our, again, I don't want to say the worst business, but the most intense with the most exterior effects on the neighboring property is I3.
Okay, thank you.
But I2 would be one step down from it. So, there's usually, and I don't have my, other than that list I just gave you on it, but yeah, there would, I mean, you could put a church there.
Right, okay.
So, and, and again, a church could, you could have 2,000 parking spots for a church going on that big lot there too, which would be a very intense traffic and everything too. So, you know, it's, it's just how, how you look at something. Is it, you know, is it, one person's good, is another person's bad, so.
Okay, I understand. As far as the lighting is concerned, I did mention maybe increasing the setback distance. However, I, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't catch your name, but if we could put some taller trees, that'd be great. My concern is obviously the light infiltration from, from the baseball, from the fields into my home and the other homes, obviously. I don't know as much about lighting as you do, but I know that lights, bleacher lights can be made directional to keep them from flashing back toward, toward the community and also the ones that are facing the community to make them directional so they're pointing down as opposed to pointing everywhere. Once again, I'm not opposed to the project. I, I embrace it. However, the light is, for me at least, the way it stands is a showstopper.
That's a.
Thank you for your time, sir.
That's a common issue that gets brought up in these type developments and it will be addressed at the site plan review.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, Steve White.
Yes, sir, Mr. White.
I would like to call the question on this, please.
Question called. On the application, Mr. Spencer, please call the roll.
Yes. White?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Mr. Clifton?
Yes, your application did pass. Say with Mr. Spencer and he can tell you where we'll go next, what you're, might do next.
Chairman Clifton, so again, to explain to folks, so this will next go to City Council for a vote. So, the planning commission has just made a positive recommendation on this item and it will go to City Council. You can check with the city clerk when it's on or call our office and, but there's no set date yet. It's up to the elected officials to decide what meeting it will be on. But you, you can check the website or call us and we'll, we'll, we'll tell you if it's on agenda or not.
Okay, thank you. Our next order of business is the site plan review of this property. If you want to stay for that portion of this item, you may. If you'd like to be excused from the rezoning portion of it, you may be excused at this time. Ms. Fields?
One more question before I do my self-approach. Come on, come on. Do you have a question?
I noticed in the paperwork that was received, we're gonna be rezoning the property from an existing I2 zoning classification to a proposed 01 zoning classification. Could you tell me how this might affect the property on both sides of White Oak Crossing? Or will those zoning issues change or remain the same?
Mr. Spencer?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, right now, the request from North Rock Public Hearing for this case today is it says the requested change would rezone the property from existing I2 zoning to the proposed 01 zoning. I don't know the classification of either of those. And I don't know if someone could help me with that via phone or where I might.
So, the question is, what is O1?
I'm sorry?
You're asking what O1 is?
No, I think what she's asking, the property to the north right now is R1 residential. The property to the south is I2, which this property in consideration is, and R1 residential. The property to the east belongs to the city of Marmel and I don't know how they have it zoned. And the property to the west belongs to the city of Marmel and I don't know how they have it zoned. So, for us to be able to decide what might happen in the future with either one of those properties, the owners to the property that is in the North Little Rock Planning Jurisdiction could come in at any time and ask for a rezon just as a, so we have no way of knowing what the future effect might be on that of this zoning.
Okay. All right. Thank you again.
No, no problem.
Okay, next order of business is item number two, SD 2020-13, the Academics Plus Charter School Lot 1 Palimony Platte in Site Plan Review of a High School Located at 9701 White Oak Crossing. Yes, sir.
Josh Mitten with Mitten Engineering. This is, I think we've gone over a lot of the, the overview of this project. We've addressed all the staff comments as they were presented to us. We will provide a photometric plan as, as part of the lighting.
Yes.
I, I know that, I'm not an electrical engineer, but I do know that there's a lot of different things they can do as far as shielding to get that down. And we can provide a plan and show where the foot candles are and how they fall on the perimeter of the property and how they affect the residential areas.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. And there was another comment about some additional shrubbery planting. Can you include that with your revised plan on your plan?
Is there any specific as far as spacing or anything?
Get with Mr. Chambers.
That you'd like for us to show?
After this meeting, he could give you some recommendations possibly.
Do you want the subdivision committee's report?
Yes.
The subdivision committee met on this issue and, and the applicant was present and we considered items one through 14 and subsections and the subdivision committee recommends approval. I would like to include, I would like to amend this and include that a photometric plan be submitted to staff for review prior to issuance of a building permit. And that evergreen screening be added adjacent to or within the buffer to enhance the screening of the lighting from the soccer field. That's a motion to amend, so I would need a second for that.
Anyone want to second Mr. Chambers' motions to amend, to add these two items to the site plan review recommendations? Can anyone hear me?
Ed Wallace, I second.
Motion made and seconded. On the amendment to be added, any comments on the amendment? Please call the roll. On the amendment.
Amendment, on the amendment. Banks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Could you read the last part of the amendment one more time, please?
Yes, Vandy. The amendment is to add a photometric plan to the requirements prior to issuance of building permit and to add supplemental evergreen screening to the buffer to, to further screen the lighting from the ball fields.
The photo plan would address the, the parking lot lighting, Vandy.
Okay. And that's more or less a study?
Yes, ma'am.
That they would submit? Okay, then yes.
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes.
And with that amendment, Mr. Chairman, the subdivision committee recommends approval.
Okay, please call the roll on the amendment, or on the application as amended.
Banks? Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer and he can tell you your next step. Thank you and good luck. If you would like to stay with us, you can. If not, you are excused to leave and we will wait a few minutes for our next applicant being rezoned case number 2020-6 to rezone property from C1 to O1 and to amend the land use plan from the quiet business to public to allow for a school at 5800 Alpha Street. Is the applicant's coming up or is there someone here?
Josh is the applicant. Let's, I'll.
I'm filling in due to the COVID-19, so.
Okay. Go ahead and give us your name on this, for the record on this case.
Josh Mitten with Mitten Engineering. And this project is to rezone C1 to O1 for a school. This is a former site of Lynch Drive Elementary School that I believe was rezoned to use something else and now is converting back to a school. They're gonna use it for alternative education programs, the Fliskey County School District.
Mr. Spencer, has there been any opposition to this application?
We have not received any, surprisingly. I thought we'd get some calls. We, we haven't received any. I think the neighbors are happy to put it back to O1. So, about five years ago, it was O1 and we rezoned it to C1 to allow business and it didn't really happen. And so, we're going back and another school wants to open up there. And so, we're going back to O1 to turn it back to what it was.
Okay, and the staff does recommend approval on this. Is there any comments from anyone in the audience on this application? Is there any comments from any of the commissioners on this application? On the application, please call the roll.
White?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer and he can tell you.
Thanks, man.
What your next. Thank you. Anyone that would like to stay is welcome to stay with us. If not, you're excused.
On that, that's probably, it's probably just gonna be this guy.
Sorry?
I think this, he'll be the only one here.
Okay. Our next case is special use case number 2020-6 to allow an after-school program in a C4 zone located at 4316 Landers Road. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Give us your name for the record, please.
Nosakara Holcomb.
And your name?
That's my name, Nosakara Holcomb. Application's name, the applicant's name is Northside Sports Corporation.
Have you had any comments or calls from anyone on this application, Mr. Spencer?
Have not received any calls on it.
You have been before the Design Review Committee and Matt, have you received a copy of the conditions?
Yes.
And you agree with those?
There were some items that we struck off and I did not bring that form upstairs with me. There were some items that we struck off because they are not applicable. All of our activities will be indoors, so the, regarding the fence and direct access to the playground, those we ask to have strictly.
Okay. Mr. Chambers?
Yes, I just want to clarify that this is an existing gymnasium, so it's, the building is perfectly suited for this use.
Okay. The issues that he just addressed, are they on the conditions on this list?
It is stated if a playground is added.
I'm sorry?
The, the items say if a playground is added, it needs to meet these requirements. So, if none is ever added, then it wouldn't meet it. So, it would cover something in the future. If a daycare wanted it really happen there, it's, we'll have it covered now. So, as long as you don't do a playground outside, you won't have to put a fence up.
And, Mr. Chairman, the North Little Rock Police Department did get back in touch with us and there are no Level 3, no Level 4 registered sex offenders living within 2,000 feet of the property.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Are there any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Banks? Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White? Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. Mr. Spencer tomorrow and he can tell you what your next step would be.
Call us tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your day.
Thank you. Next order of business is subdivision case number 2020-12, the Crystal Hill subdivision, lots 18R and 19R, a replat at 6012 Crystal Hill Road. Is the applicant here?
He was not able to make it and asked if I could cover the question, cover it for him.
Okay.
Real quick. So, he was not, not able to make it, but it is a, where the liquor store and the house is and they were dividing the property into two pieces of property so they could sell off, sell off the liquor store. could sell off, sell off the liquor store and the current owner live in the house. So it met with the subdivision committee and the design review committee and they were agreeing to everything.
Okay.
Do you want that report?
Yes.
Chambers?
Design Review Committee met and considered SD 2020-12, Crystal Hill subdivision lots 18R and 19R replat, commercial residential lots located at 612, 6012 Crystal Hill Road. The applicant was present. He agreed to items one through nine and subsections and the development review committee recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
White?
Yes.
Wallace? Foster?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Belasco?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Thank you. Your application did pass. Item number six on our agenda is SD 2020-16, RCA Edition Lot 1, a replat and a site plan review of a veterans dormitory located at 1401 Moss Street. Is the applicant here?
I am Chairman Clifton, Thomas Pallinale with Thomas Engineering.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yes, sir. The-
Go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
Design Review Committee met and considered SD 2020-16, RCA Edition Lot 1 replat and site plan review of a veterans dormitory located at 1401 Moss Street. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through 13 and subsections and the design review committee recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Are there any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Belasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz? Was that, was that a pass, Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Okay. Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Application did pass. Get with Mr. Spencer and he can tell you what to do next. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Who's your help?
Another man coming along. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next order of business, we have approved the minutes of our previous meeting. We will move into our public comment. Anyone? Any commissioners have a comment they'd like to make at this time?
Move to adjourn.
Motion made. Did someone say? Motion made and seconded. We adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Spencer, do we need a roll call vote? Thank you. Thank you all for participating in something that we've never done before. I believe it went off well despite my stumblings along of some, but it all went well and I think everybody left with a, a happy solution to their applications. We are adjourned. Thank you all so much.